This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2015, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, on January 5th, 2015, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to the microphone, please speak into the microphone. And assistive listening devices are available. Mr. Crossen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Burt Middler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Here.
Board Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Board Administrator Kovak.
I don't see anyone from Main Street here tonight, so we'll forego the Main Street Minute. Council reports. Councilwoman Elsie Foster-Dublin?
(inaudible).
Do you have a report?
Yes, it's a very brief one. Tonight, we're going to be having -- the clerk is going to be passing an ordinance on parking on Dennison Street, and it's going to be enforced in approximately two weeks. So after she reads the report, then at that time, I will urge everyone to be conscious of the ordinance and that it will be in effect about the no parking on Dennison, on the south side. And I'll yield until that time comes around.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fine?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a report. Good evening. I would like to address the proposed smoking ordinance regarding retail sale of tobacco and electronic smoking devices that is on our agenda this evening. On February 5th, 2015, the Highland Park Board of Health met and voted unanimously for a resolution recommending that this governing body adopt an ordinance to make it unlawful for any business to sell tobacco products or electronic smoking devices to anyone younger than 21 years of age. On February 10th, 2015, the Health and Human Services Committee, which I chair, met and decided to recommend that the council consider the Board of Health's recommendation. Over the past few weeks, this governing body has had an opportunity to debate and discuss adopting such an ordinance. Main Street Highland Park has reached out to local businesses to get feedback on the proposed ordinance. In 2006, the state of New Jersey raised the legal age of smoking from 18 to 19. In a 2013 article in the New Jersey -- sorry, the New England Journal of Medicine, Dr. Michael Steinberg, director of the Rutgers Tobacco Dependence Program, who is here with us this evening, stated that 90 percent of cigarettes purchased for minors are done so by people aged 18 to 20 years. A recent online editorial published on February 23rd, 2015, on NJ.com stated that in December, the National Institute on Drug Abuse issued some good news. A report indicated that the use of tobacco had fallen 8 percent the previous month among eighth, 10th, and 12th graders in a survey of nearly 50,000 young people. The news here at home was less rosy. The executive director of Summit-Based Global Advisors on Smoke-Free Policy said state figures had not declined, and the New Jersey Department of Health said 13.6 percent of the state's high school students had smoked in the previous 30 days. This past Thursday, March 12th, 2015, the Institute of Medicine issued a report that Congress required the U.S. Food and Drug Administration to commission that provides support for Highland Park raising the minimum age of sale for tobacco products and electronic smoking devices to 21 years of age. Dr. Richard Bonney, a professor of medicine and law at the University of Virginia and the chair of the Institute of Medicine that wrote the report, has stated that increasing the minimum age, the minimum age to 21, will prevent or delay 15- to 17-year-olds from taking up the smoking habit. Younger teens often get older teens to buy cigarettes for them, and they may know a lot of friends who are 18 and 19. However, they are unlikely to have as many 21-year-old friends, and that's why raising the age to 21 seems to have the most public health benefit. The Institute of Medicine report urges us to consider the public health benefit of not having adolescents become addicted to nicotine while their brains are still developing. I know that there are those who will argue that we are creating a nanny state and that 19- and 20-year-olds should be able to smoke if they want to. However, by leaving the minimum age to purchase cigarettes at 19, the Highland Park community, the health system, and anyone forced to inhale second-hand or even third-hand smoke pays a price. There are those who will argue that 19- and 20-year-olds will just go to neighboring towns to purchase cigarettes, so banning the purchase of cigarettes to 19- and 20-year-olds in Highland Park won't matter. To those who make such an argument, I would say that making it less convenient for 19- and 20-year-olds to purchase tobacco products is a good thing. Nicotine is dangerous and addictive, and I think it is important to do whatever we can to prevent kids from smoking tobacco products. I have also heard arguments made that this ordinance will cause small business owners in Highland Park to not only lose customers to their competitors in neighboring towns, but that it will also impact their sales from customers who purchase additional items when they go to the store to purchase tobacco products. Do I believe that Highland Park business owners who sell tobacco products may lose some business? Yes, I do. And I understand that every small business owner rightfully cares about their bottom line. However, I'm in favor of this ordinance because I believe raising the minimum age to purchase cigarettes will save lives. And so for the future health of our community, my hope is that the business owners in our borough will partner with us. Therefore, I believe that this governing body should adopt an ordinance that makes it unlawful for any business to sell tobacco products or electronic smoking devices to anyone younger than 21 years of age. I agree with the March 2015 report of the Institute of Medicine that we need to consider the public health benefit of not having adolescents become addicted to nicotine while their brains are still developing. So I urge this governing body to vote in favor of adopting this new smoking ordinance, which will protect our youth and the future health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fine. Councilman Potts?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everyone that, of course, spring is here. Slowly but surely, we're getting nicer weather, and registrations for the spring sports, of course, are being taken at our Office of Recreation currently. Also want to mention that the, again, we've mentioned it previously, the Department of Community Services has that free tax assistance provided by United Way, and that's held on Mondays and Wednesdays at the Senior Youth Center from 9:30 to 2 o'clock. It is open to any residents of Highland Park who earn less than $60,000 in this past year, 2014. So I do want to remind you of that because tax season is coming, it'll be shortly coming to an end, and most of you are probably happy about that. Lastly, I just want to mention a spaghetti dinner which is being held this coming Thursday, March 19th, beginning at 7:00 in the Highland Park High School cafeteria. And it's a spaghetti dinner to support Christina Stevenson, who was a 2012 Highland Park High School alumnus, and she's actually the daughter of someone who works in the Highland Park High School system. And that dinner is starting at 7:00 this Thursday at the Highland Park High School. Tickets are $5 for children and $10 for adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead. What is a dinner for? I know it's to help her, but what --
It's to help with expenses.
Is she sick?
Non-Hodgkin's lymphoma.
Oh, okay.
We didn't know why.
Yeah, she's going, I'm sorry. She's going through several, several months of chemotherapy treatments and different things. Her non-Hodgkin's lymphoma was actually discovered fairly, I believe it was stage three before it was found. So she's going through some serious treatments, and they're, the high school, some of the staff at the high school decided since her mom is working at the school currently, and Christina was a 2012 alumnus, that they would try to help the family with some expenses that are being covered.
So it's the medical, the dinner is for medical, to help with medical expenses?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Erickson?
No report.
Okay. Council President Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things. One, a reminder to save the date, Sunday, April 19th, our Earth Day celebration down at our Environmental Center on River Road. There'll be music and food and hands-on demos. Bring the kids, bring the whole family. It's a fun, it's a very fun event. And another item I'd like to bring to everybody's attention is there is a charter school in East Brunswick called Hittikva, and they have requested an expansion in two ways, to add additional classes and also to add additional grade levels. In January, the governing body issued a letter to Department of Education Commissioner Dave Hesby urging him to oppose the expansion, to deny the expansion. The response from the DOE, from the Department of Education, is due any day now. So we are encouraging all residents that value a good public education for our children, for our community, and for our future, to please contact Dave Hesby, either by phone or email, at the Office of Charter School, New Jersey. The phone number is 609-292-5887. Please call and voice your concerns. Thank you very much.
And Council President Wolkowitz, can you explain to people how this school would have an impact on our taxes?
Thank you, thank you very much. By the way, we've posted, we've posted something on Facebook. Charter schools are paid for by your tax dollars. It's an extra cost. Obviously, our taxes keep increasing, the cost of it, to educate our children is expensive, and the money comes right off of our, of the amount that you pay your taxes. It's additional expenses in administration and building costs, the whole, the whole thing. You've heard people say that we should regionalize, we should combine with Metuchen or Piscataway as a way to, to prevent our school costs from going up. Well, this is just exactly the opposite. You're creating an entire new administration, more teachers, more costs all along. It's a very inefficient system, and it's, and it's financially unsustainable.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Elsie.
That would be a direct impact on Highland Park residents, taxpayers of Highland Park, so additional taxes may incur because of this?
That's correct.
Do you want to talk a little to how much it costs us to send each of the children to that school?
It costs about $16,000 per child. At the beginning of this year, the Department of Education withheld somewhere near $400,000 from what was due us for an estimated 27 children that would attend Hittikva. That's money that we couldn't use.
Okay. Thank you. The Borough Administrator is now President Borough Attorney. Do you have a report?
Madam Mayor, yes, a brief report. You may have read that the New Jersey Supreme Court, a week ago today, issued their latest Affordable Housing COA decision, and basically recognized that the state agency known as COA is not really functioning any longer, and directed that all of the town compliance plans now be considered by the courts, which is exactly the way it was before COA existed. We kind of have a leg up because fortunately or unfortunately, we've been in the courts. We've settled both of our Mount Laurel litigations, and we are working on what's called a compliance plan with Judge Paley. All towns are going to have to do the same thing. So I just wanted to report to the citizens and also to the elected officials that we are well aware of what our obligations are. The staff is working on those. And probably sometime in June or July, there'll be a final hearing before Judge Paley where we will present our compliance plan, our fair share plan, for the next 10 years, and then the other towns will soon follow.
Thank you. All right, I have a brief report. First of all, I had the great pleasure of hearing our municipal band perform on Sunday afternoon. If any of you have not had a chance to hear them, I suggest you check the Borough's website and the Borough's Facebook page for their next upcoming performance. They are amazing. Secondly, please mark your calendars. Highland Park recognizes the fact that we could not do half or more of everything that we do for all of you without having the kinds of volunteers that we have working on all our committees, commissions, our independent agencies such as Main Street and the Redevelopment Agency. And so we are planning on a volunteer recognition event for the evening of April 15th. We will have samplings of the different ethnic foods from all our restaurants in town for you to enjoy, and we'll be talking about some of the great accomplishments of our volunteers. So I hope you'll join us there. And lastly, in honor of St. Patrick's Day, the Borough of Highland Park was asked to submit the name of an Irish-American hero to the county, and I am proud to say that our resident Frank Corcoran was honored by the Freeholders on Sunday, on Sunday, March 15th, at the Irish-American flag-raising ceremony in New Brunswick. Mr. Corcoran has lived in Highland Park since 1997 and Middlesex County since 1971. He was born and raised in the Bronx to his Irish Catholic parents, Anna and George Corcoran. Frank is the fourth of five brothers. He was educated at St. Margaret Mary's Catholic School by the Sisters of Mercy from Ireland, and Frank's professional career was in telephone company management in New Jersey. Frank survived some serious drug and alcohol addictions in the 80s and 90s, and in the mid-90s, he got help and turned his life around. Frank is very active in the New Jersey Gay Pride Center in Highland Park, participating in groups and supporting individuals who have recently come out. He is also active in the dignity movement, an effort to create acceptance of LGBT individuals within the Roman Catholic Church. He is active in the Reform Church of Highland Park, running the Tower Thrift Shop that serves the needs of hundreds of countywide residents every year. Under Frank's leadership, the shop has grown fourfold, opened 21 hours a week, run by 20-plus volunteers. Frank makes sure that Highland Park's community calls to mind the Irish culture and history that he embodies, many years hosting a St. Patrick's Day celebration at the Reform Church. I'm honored and thrilled that the county agreed with us and selected Frank as one of their Irish-American honorees. At this point, I'm turning the meeting over to public discussion. Is there anyone here who has any comments? Yes? Step up to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
My name is Michael Steinberg, 12 Woodgate Drive in South Brunswick, New Jersey.
Dr. Steinberg, can you talk closer to the microphone so people can hear you? Is it on?
Yes.
I usually don't have a problem with voice, so.
Well, we have a TV camera going. We want the people at home to be able to hear you.
Very good. So thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to speak to the proposal in terms of raising the age of sale of tobacco to 21. I'm a general internal medicine physician here at Bobo Johnson Medical School, so I see the impact of tobacco use every day in terms of patients and their family. So I really, I want to kind of come out and support this proposal. Just by way of background, 90 percent of adults who smoke on a daily basis have had their first cigarette by the age of 18. So any, any policy that can reduce tobacco use under the age of 18 will have a dramatic impact on adult smoking in the future. 18- to 20-year-olds purchase only 2 percent of cigarettes across the country. So in terms of the number of cigarettes purchased, that age group between 18 and 20 is a very small number in terms of purchasing of tobacco. However, they supply over 90 percent of the cigarettes that are smoked by younger people, so aged 14 to 17. So even though they only, they only purchase a small number of cigarettes, a lot of them end up in the hands of young people. When, when surveys have been done looking at perceptions around raising age of tobacco sale across the country, 75 percent of adults in the country support raising the age of tobacco to 21, and that includes 70 percent of current smokers. So there's, there's a strong majority of support across the country on raising the age of sale to 21. 50 cities covering 11.5 million people in the country have taken the step of raising tobacco age of sale to 21, including New York City, which implemented that policy last year. And New York City epidemiology officials estimate that by raising the age of sale to 21 in New York City will result in a 55 percent reduction of tobacco use among age 18- to 20-year-olds, but more importantly, will reduce the age, will reduce the incidence of tobacco use among 14- to 17-year-olds by over 2/3. So really, the intent of implementing these types of policies is to reduce tobacco use in young people, age 13, 14, 15, 16, 17-year-olds. And it's hard to imagine that there are many people who would be opposed to the idea of reducing smoking among 14-year-olds. So thank you for considering this, this policy. It's a very strong step forward for public health.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Jay Crossen. I live at 113 Harper Street here in Highland Park, and I've been a member of the Highland Park Board of Health since 2008, and I just want to add my strong voice of support to this potential ordinance for banning the sale of tobacco products to people under age 21. And I'm also a parent of two teenagers, and so the idea that this type of action on the part of our town can help to protect my teens and other teens from being exposed to these dangerous products that could have a negative effect on their health is one of the reasons I'm really in favor of. So Highland Park has done a lot in the past to reduce tobacco dependence and smoking through our outdoor ban on smoking here on Borough property, and prior to that, even from our, our ban on cigarette mending machines before they were banned other places. We have a long history of leading the way on this public health issue, and I hope we do too.
Thank you. And Dr. Steinberg, I just want to, if you could clarify something, it was, it's a little confusing as a concept, but my understanding is, from what you were saying, that the bulk of the cigarettes that the 14- to 17-year-old teenagers get are from purchases made by 17- to 19-year-olds?
By 18- to 20-year-olds. So in other words, in other words, over 90 percent of the cigarettes smoked by 14- to 17-year-olds, they get them from 18- to 20-year-olds, which is exactly the group that will be impacted by raising the age to 21.
Thank you.
So really, you're dramatically reducing the source of cigarettes for children.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other public discussion at this point?
Hey, good evening. Happy St. Patty's Day. My name is Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue here in Highland Park. Thank you, Councilman Fine, for taking the lead and moving this ordinance through. I think it's really important as well. My, my only thought is, and actually, Mr. Crossen, I'm glad that the Board of Health is represented, because I'm wondering, just from a, from a public health standpoint, you know, I love how Highland Park is true to its philosophies and takes the lead in a lot of these things, but from a public health standpoint, is this conversation happening, A, with, with neighboring towns, and B, on the county level? Because that might address some of the concerns about, about the economic, the single-town economic impact and people going over town.
Okay. Well, we don't usually do this sort of format in the council meeting, but Mr. Crossen, if you wouldn't mind answering those questions, you'll have to come up to the microphone and state your address again.
Hi, my name is Jay Crossen. I still live at 113 Harper Street. So we have not had those discussions with other boards of health in, in other towns around us, but I think that's a great idea and something we could start to open up that discussion with. And, you know, we have a relationship with the county health department through our health inspector, and so we can talk with her about which could be the town's, which could be the first one.
Thank you. And Councilman Fine, I believe when you first brought this to council, you mentioned other municipalities throughout the state who have adopted similar ordinances?
Yes, so to date, in the past eight months, Englewood, Sayerville, Tinac, and Pagoda have already passed ordinances at the municipal governing body level, and I believe the Princeton Board of Health has passed an ordinance as well.
Council President Wolkowitz?
And also, I understand New York City passed it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, now, if there's any other public discussion on any topic? No? Okay. Clerk, would you report on advertising an amendment to our parking ordinance, Dennison Street, for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, Chapter 7, concerning parking on Dennison Street, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication or a file. The ordinance was posted and made available. Public inspection is required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion. Second.
All right. Any public hearing on this? Okay, seeing none. May I have a resolution, do I have approval to, for a resolution to adopt and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes, with an explanation. This is that we're, we're moving, we're moving forward with a no parking, especially during emergencies on this particular side of the road, and it's on the, it's on the south side, correct, Chief? It's leading south?
That's where parking will be prohibited on the south side.
South side of Dennison.
And that the south side of Dennison, there will be no parking. So just to want to be clear, the signs should be going up within the next two weeks to properly notify everyone that there will be no parking on this part of the street. And with that, yes.
Okay. Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
And if I may just clarify, and this was brought to your attention because it was impossible for emergency vehicles and even the snowplow to go through the street with parking on both sides of the street, and even though it said, "No parking when roads are snow-covered," it wasn't being addressed?
Vehicles could not get through.
Correct. So, yes.
Okay. All right. Before I go into the next ordinance, which is the ordinance regulating the retail sale of tobacco and electronic smoking devices, we will be voting on this on first reading at this time. I do want to mention that there will be, the council has been discussing this at length for some time now, and we will be fine-tuning some of the wording in portions A and portions E. In portion A, the restriction of sale of these regular tobacco cigarettes, anti-cigarettes will be prohibited will be prohibited both in face-to-face in stores and also online. And then in portion E, we will be requiring that the business owner, not the individual workers within the store, would be responsible for making sure that the salespeople will be following the regulations that we provide in this ordinance. Okay, having said that, clerk, would you report on the introduction of an ordinance, retail sale of tobacco and electronic smoking devices, for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending the Code of the Borough of Highland Park 2010, Chapter 165, by adding Article 3 concerning retail sale of tobacco and electronic smoking devices, has been introduced in writing by the Health and Human Services Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes, with the caveat that the amendments will be made in the ordinance by the time we get to the next reading.
Right.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the following stored items? Resolution to approve Bill's List, resolution to approve wrecker license 2015, resolution to approve facade and awning improvement contracts, resolution to ratify the Superior Officer Association contract, resolution to credit water sewer account Cedar Lane Treetops Apartments, resolution authorizing the refund of housing inspection fees, resolution to credit water sewer account 421 South 9th Avenue, resolution to approve the farmers' market and artisan market, resolution to approve amended pay estimate number four and final change order 2011 sidewalk improvements 18 Concrete Incorporated, resolution to approve 2014 tonnage grant application, resolution to amend annual salary resolution, resolution to approve change orders, public safety building, resolution to approve pay estimate number 28, H&amp;S Construction and Mechanical Incorporated Public Safety Building Improvements. Stop there, right? Okay. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. I am appointing Kevin Friedman to the Human Relations Commission and Jim Walsh to the Environmental Commission. Clerk, would you report on the election of volunteer firefighter?
Okay, received notification from the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department of the election of, did I have to say that name because I'm dressing it up?
Zvi.
Zvi, Zvi Titelbaum.
Okay. Motion to confirm?
So motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further public discussion? Please come up to the microphone.
Mrs. Bicard, 307 Magnolia. Ah, I always forget these, but it's limited. Sidewalk repairs, what's going to happen now that the snow has kind of melted and the ice underneath has cracked, the new sidewalk that should have been repaired three years ago, is there going to be some progress coming up? Spring is around the corner, and sidewalks are going to be repaired?
Do you want to address that?
Is the issue that there are additional problems? I'm sorry, just to hear.
Well, there are problems that have been there for ever and a day and haven't been addressed, and now those pieces are, the breakages are bigger, there are more...
Okay. So what happens?
I invite you to come one Sunday, or actually on a Saturday, because I don't drive, and walk with you through this borough. I have walked the lengths and the breadth of it because I have friends living all over. There isn't one street where the sidewalk shouldn't be repaired.
So there's many levels to this, Mrs. Bicard? First of all, I'd love to walk with you. I enjoy conversation with you. So, and please join me on any Wednesday morning in April to walk.
Wednesday is my eye day.
Okay. So there's many levels to the sidewalk situation. First of all, because of the winter, there are some issues that have developed that are new, not the ones you were talking about that are old. And our code enforcement people will be out checking on all of these, and they will get repaired. The second thing is that there are still some sidewalks that have not yet finished getting repaired from the last go-round, and we will be addressing those as soon as the weather allows us to, because it wouldn't make sense, we couldn't do it now.
I understand, that's why I'm saying.
Yes, yes. And as always, if you find a particular area that's not being addressed, you know, we welcome your input on that.
I'll give you a longer list.
Okay.
Where there are chunks that are missing, and they were missing last fall.
Yes, those, right, right. Well, if you remember, there was some litigation, we had to stop the work for a while, and now we'll be going back to it once we can.
You've marked the bicycle path on the streets. I have yet to see a bicycle off the sidewalk and onto the street.
Right. So our Complete Streets Task Force is going to be addressing the sharrows. Susan, would you like to respond?
Sure. We've put an article out in the E-News a few months ago, but we plan to do that again and maybe send a link as well to a public service announcement. That's out there. We've been looking at various ones that we think would be most appropriate for our town. And also, we are planning to do more education in the schools as well, and I believe we might also be planning a bike rodeo as well. And that can also, that's also an opportunity for us to help educate the public, especially kids.
I think, I see it only myself when I walk into New Brunswick, that much of the traffic, the bicycle traffic of people who are working in this area, they're just automatically right on the sidewalks rather than into the street.
Right.
It seems. Something that's been a thorn in my side, and I'm really getting more annoyed about it every time, and that is the way the garbage collectors throw the containers. They dump them out, they park in the middle of the street, and then when they're finished, they chuck them over. And they crack. It's cold outside. I would like to see us joining perhaps with Edison. They have the containers, and a truck comes and picks them up. Maybe whoever's department that is would consider that, it might even save us some tax dollars.
Well, actually, this is your night, Councilwoman Wolkowitz, so would you like to...
We should just do lunch, so, and I'd love to walk with you, too. I'd love to walk with you, too. So certainly, I will relay that information to Public Works tomorrow morning. You did mention this, I believe what you're talking about is the machine that has the, connects to the can and lifts it up.
Yeah, and then they have this thing.
And we have one of those. And so, we, do we have it already now? Do we purchase, or we're planning on purchasing this?
No, we have one of those, but it can only be used on certain streets because of the width of the street and the size of the truck that it requires.
Yep. So we are moving towards that slowly, but we are moving towards that.
Okay. And the last thing is street cleaning. I live on a street where there's only parking on one side, therefore, the garbage collects on my side of the street. Isn't there some way where maybe for two hours, once a week, all the cars can move on the other side, so our street could get cleaned up?
You're talking about alternate side of the street parking?
And I know that's a problem, because on my side, I have a lot of students, and everybody goes to work and so on. But maybe if you have it from 6:00 to 8:00 in the morning, before the people leave for work, the sweeper could sweep through, then they could come back again. Something for you to think of.
And, I know, we've addressed this, we've talked about this several times. I believe that what ends up happening is people don't move their cars, and then it becomes impossible to sweep. But Elsie, did you have anything more to add?
Yes, we discussed this in our public safety meeting, as I told you, that I would definitely bring it up in our next meeting, which I did. And there were a number of concerns that came up. While the idea of alternate side of the street parking is a great idea, and initially, I cheered at it, I was like, wow, this is great. And then there were other issues about religious holidays, that people cannot move their cars on certain religious holidays, there's emergency situations, and there are situations where people are away for extended amount of time, and do we go ahead and ticket them while they're away, because the car can't be moved for a street cleaning? So those were some of the concerns that came up, especially for our town, and we have a lot of religious holidays and observances, and people can't move their cars then, and if they were supposed to be, if they were parked at that time, then obviously, we would be issuing tickets, because they would be in violation. And because of that and other factors, it would not be feasible to have the car moved from one side to the next, and people unfortunately would move their car, forget about it, and not even move their car back. Because we have had incidents where people have left their car in one spot for six months, and they were out of the country.
Yes, I don't think that the street should be used as parking the lot for people who move.
And I do understand that, like, you know, you're one of the persons that come all the time and say, some, you know, most persons have a two-car garage, but they have four cars. And so this would be in one of those situations.
And I allowed a student of mine who got a fellowship in California for a semester, she left in June and didn't come back till the end of December, to park in my backyard.
That's very generous of you.
No, I think that's common sense. I've just talked to somebody in New York City. I have children who live in the city, a family in the city. They all say accommodate holidays, they accommodated the snow, and you've got a car, or even more than one car in the family, you want to go on vacation, find a place to store your car. Don't take that out on the rest of the resident. I'm not the guardian.
Thank you, Mrs. Bicard.
You know, and with that in mind also, thank you for bringing that to our attention, but that in mind also, we all have a responsibility to keep our street clean and not to use our sidewalk as garbage can when we exit our cars. So that could be another piece of education that's put out there about us all taking responsibility for our town and keeping it clean.
Thank you.
At this point, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion go into executive session?
Second.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you all very much.